Good evening, everyone. The time is now five thirty P M. I would like to call to order our regular open session meeting minutes. I mean, excuse me, our open session board meeting. Um, I don't plan to keep you long, so let's dive right into it, okay? Roll call, please.
Yes, Board President, Mr. Hannah. Board Secretary, Ms. Griffin.
Present.
Board Member, Mr. Dawson.
Present.
Board Member, Mrs. Williams Woolford.
Present.
Board Member, Mr. Morris Junior, absent, and Board Member, Mr. Buchanan, absent.
Thank you. Okay, next, pledge of allegiance, may you please rise. Thank you. Next, we move to a moment of silence. At this time, I ask that you please place all cell phones on silent and or vibrate. Thank you. Spotlight on success, Ms. Colleen Layton, the librarian.
Good evening. My name is Colleen Layton, and I am the Lindop Librarian. On October twenty first, twenty twenty four, local author Malcolm Newsom came to Lindop to read his book Sidney's Big Speech to students in grades kindergarten through fifth grade and conduct question and answer sessions with each grade level.
Sidney's Big Speech is about a little girl who has to make a speech in front of her class. With the help of her dad, Sidney seeks inspiration from black female leaders like Kamala Harris, Shirley Chisholm, and Carol Mosley Brown to help her prepare.
My name is Zoe Russo. Sidney taught me how to be confident and proud.
My name is Ellie Madell, and my favorite part of the author visit was when we got to ask Mr. Newsom questions about his life and work.
My name is Malia Morgan, and we worked as a class to pre-read the text and come up with questions we like to ask for Mr. Newsom. For example, my question we was, will you make another book about Sidney?
My favorite part of Mr. Newsom's visit was when he read the book to us and talked about black excellence.
Thanks to the generosity of the Board of Education, every student from kindergarten to fifth grade and all staff members received a free signed copy of the book to keep forever.
We want to thank you all and make sure each of you has a copy of the book that you can keep forever, too. If you open the book to the title page, you will see a special note and an autograph from Mr. Newsom. Per a nationwide survey, author visits motivate students to read more, inspire creativity and expression, and motivate students to write more as well. There is a lot of background work that goes into coordinating a visit, but I believe it is well worth the effort. Thank you again for your support in making this happen. It was a memorable day for everybody. We hope to have many more author visits. Our authors come to Lindop in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Layton, and thank you, young ladies. Hope you guys had a good time. Any other board members?
I would like to say it's great that you're having the young ladies and the students to come up and speak before the board and the rest of the crowd because public speaking is really a big thing that they really need to be on top of, and thank you.
I say to you, each of you, continue to read, reading, learning to read, and reading for joy will take you far in life. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Layton. Next, we have public comment. Um, I have none, so we'll keep moving. For your request, Madam Secretary. Oh, nope. Oh, Madam Secretary, yes.
Okay, um, there was a for-year request from Angela Evans via the Freedom of Information Sunday, January nineteenth at three oh nine P M. Um, it says, good evening and morning. I would like a for-year payroll. I am requesting a copy of all payroll records and copies of all checks for the following. Superintendent, administrator, teachers, substitute teachers. Questions, please forward completed for-year requests to Angela twenty-five at yahoo dot com. Thank you, and have a wonderful day from Angela Patterson. And there was a second one from around Tuesday, the twenty-first at three forty-five. Excuse me, three fifty-four. Says, good evening, we are requesting copies of payroll checks and miscellaneous payments for the following superintendent, assistant superintendent, principal, assistant principal, volunteers, and all administrative staff. Thank you, Mr. J. P. Patterson.
Where requests have been satisfied.
All have been satisfied.
Thank you so much. Next, moving right along, Madam Secretary is back on you, upcoming events correspondent.
Okay, everyone is requested to read all of the upcoming events at their leisure, and there were no correspondence.
Thank you so much. All right, consent agenda. That's me. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Can we take these items out of, um, the consent agenda and vote on them separately, please? Thank you.
What item?
All of them, one through, one through eight. I'm sorry, not all. One through eight, nine, you can leave in, um, the consent agenda.
Uh, can we not take a vote on that?
Yes. There's no vote necessary. Whenever you request something to come out of consent agenda, you have a right to do that.
Okay, Ms. Woolford, you read that consent agenda the way you want it to be.
What did you say?
You read it.
Read what?
What you want to do, one through eight, however you want it, you read it. And we'll vote on it.
Read the consent agenda.
However you want, whatever you want snatched out, to vote separately, you read it, we'll vote on it. This is the second time at an open session board meeting that you've done this. You've had it since Friday. You could have made your whatever remarks you had. We could have made that and had those in and not do this right now.
Okay, so for future references, can we not put the minutes or any, um, payroll or any financial things in the consent agenda? If we want to use our time more effectively, that's what I'm asking for. So the consent agenda, I make a motion that we approve consent agenda item number nine. Recommended approval to change review date on policies five colon ten, five colon twenty, five colon thirty, five colon forty, five colon fifty, five colon sixty, five colon seventy, five colon eighty, five colon ninety, five colon one hundred, five colon one ten, five colon one twenty, five colon one twenty-five, five colon one thirty, five colon one fifty, five colon one seventy, five colon one eighty, five colon one eighty-five, five colon one ninety, five colon two hundred, five colon two ten, five colon two twenty, five colon two thirty, five colon two forty, five colon two fifty, five colon two sixty, five colon two seventy, five colon two eighty, five colon two eighty-five, five colon two ninety, five colon three hundred, five colon three hundred ten, five colon three twenty, and five colon three hundred and thirty as presented.
Okay, first of all, you didn't make a motion to remove the others, to strike those.
I need to, okay. I make a motion that we move, remove consent agenda items. Uh, one, recommended approval of the special open session meeting minutes for Monday, January twenty seven, two thousand twenty-five. Number two, recommended approval of the special closed session meeting minutes for Monday, January twenty seven, two thousand twenty-five. Number three, recommended approval of the special open session meeting minutes for Monday, February tenth, two thousand twenty-five. Number four, recommended approval of the special closed session meeting minutes for Monday, February tenth, two thousand twenty-five. Number five, recommended approval of Lindap District Ninety-two Accounts Payable for January seventeen, two thousand twenty-five through February twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, in the amount of three hundred seventy-one dollars. Three hundred, three hundred seventy-one dollar, I'm sorry, three hundred and seventy-one thousand, thirty-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents. Number six, recommended approval of Lindap District Ninety-two Activity Accounts Reconciliation for January twenty twenty-five. Number seven, recommended approval of Linda District Ninety-two Payroll for January seventeen, two thousand twenty-five through Jan- February twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, in the amount of five hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred, fourteen dollars and seventy-eight cents. Recommended approval of second, uh, no, that's it, one through seven.
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
He said one through seven because originally he said one through eight.
Right, one through seven, I stopped at seven, reading the motion.
Ms. Griffin, you second?
Yes.
Okay, Board President, Mr. Hannah.
No.
You, you don't have to make, you don't have to, um, call for a vote on that. When you ask for consent ajad items to be removed, there is no vote.
Yeah, we do vote.
There is no vote to remove consent agenda items.
We vote on the actual item itself to approve.
Right, but we're not approving those. We're removing them from the agenda, and then we're gonna vote on each one of them separate after the consent agenda has been approved, which would include agenda items eight and nine.
Well, but you just did number nine.
Okay.
No, 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 no. So.
So we're only striking through.
It's really not a motion, I'm just requesting them to be pulled out.
Okay.
So one through seven has been stripped, okay?
Moved out of the consent.
Out of the consent agenda. And so you made a motion.
It shouldn't have been a motion, I'm.
You made a motion originally before you did the removal of one through seven, you made a motion to approve consent agenda item number nine. So we need a second, and then you took eight out of the original statement, so we're gonna need another motion to approve item number eight.
That's fine.
Okay, so who wants the second number?
Ms. Cheryl Griffin.
And currently, we're voting on nine, correct?
Yes, so we are voting on consent agenda item number nine for the record. The motion was made by Mrs. Penny Williams Woolford. The second was Ms. Griffin, and now we'll do a roll call. So Board President, Mr. Hannah.
Yeah.
Board Secretary, Ms. Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan. Board Member, Mrs. Williams Woolford.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Woody Morris.
Thank you, motion carries.
Now we need a, a motion for consent agenda item number eight. You wanna go ahead and do that, Ms.? So we need a motion for consent ajad, uh, excuse me, consent agenda item number eight.
So we just need somebody to make a motion for it. Okay, Brian Dawson, recommended, uh, I'd like to move that the board approved second read and adoption with edits of policies four ten, four twenty, four, one, six, five, as presented.
So we need a.
Wait, a second, please.
A second.
Roll call, please.
Board Secretary, Ms. Griffin.
Yay.
Board President, Mr. Hannah.
Yeah.
Board pre- or, excuse me, Board Member, Mr. Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan. Board Member, Mrs. Penny Williams Woolford.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Morris Junior, for the record, is absent.
Thank you. Okay, one through seven. Mr. Dawson, Ms. Lee Woolford.
Yeah, the two of them can do it. What we doing?
Wanna read one through seven? Yeah, not really.
You have to do them each individually.
Individually.
We take a, 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 a five minute recess?
I'll, I'll read them so that we can move this along, but we will not continue to do this in open session, okay?
We'll have a conversation in close session.
This will not continue to happen. I make a motion that the board approve the open session, oh, special open session meeting minutes for Monday, January twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-five. Can I have a second, please?
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Roll call, please.
Just so I'm correct, this is consent agenda item number one.
Yes, ma'am.
It is technically the consent agenda item. Okay, well, item number one, whatever that motion was, I have to make sure I collect it correctly. So, um, Board President, Mr. Hannah.
Yeah.
Board Secretary, Ms. Griffin.
Yay.
Mr. Dawson.
Yay.
Thank you, Board Member. Board Member, Mr. Buchanan. Board Member, Mrs. Williams Woolford.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Morris Junior, absent.
Thank you.
Discussion.
What you wanna discuss, Ms. Woolford?
At this meeting, uh, I mean, according to, um, what should be in the meetings for January twenty-seventh, there was a public comment about, um, the students coming out and they're not performing. I was just curious as to, uh, when the students came out at the meeting and, um, there wasn't a quorum, why weren't the children allowed to perform? Because you don't need a quorum for children to perform considering that it was cold, families was out, and everybody was present.
So who were they presenting to? If they came to present to us, then you aren't here.
The board members that were present.
But they didn't come to present to certain board members. They came to present to the board and the whole, and you guys weren't here.
Okay, so there's, there was two board members missing tonight when they were presenting. It didn't matter, but.
So the one that's missing called me to say that he would not be here.
It doesn't matter what I'm.
Place to sit up here and.
My question is, why weren't the children allowed to perform? Because you don't need a quorum for children to perform.
So, again, the children came here to speak like they just spoke to this board. And we let them down.
Thank you.
Point blank period.
Now I came.
Roll call, please.
So, that was item one that we just did was the, um, open session. Minutes, so now we need a motion for the closed session. She just discussed after the.
Okay, so let's have a discussion before we do that, okay? I make a motion to approve the special closed session meeting minutes for Monday, January twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-five. Can I have a second, please?
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Thank you. Is there a discussion? There are none. Roll call, please.
Board President, Mr. Hannah.
Yeah.
Board Secretary, Ms. Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan.
Yeah.
Board Member, Mrs. Williams Woolford.
No.
Board Member, Mr. Morris Junior is absent.
Thank you, motion carries. Recommended approval of the special open session meeting minutes for Monday, February tenth, two thousand twenty-five. Can I have a second, please?
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Is there a discussion? There is none. Roll call, please.
Board President, Mr. Hannah.
Yeah.
Board Secretary, Ms. Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Dawson.
Yeah.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan.
Yeah.
Board Member, Mrs. Williams Woolford.
No.
Board Member, Mr. Morris Junior, absent.
Thank you, motion carries. Recommended approval for second for a special closed session meeting minutes for Monday, February tenth, two thousand twenty-five. Can I have a second, please?
Ms. Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Thank you. Is there a discussion? There is none. Roll call, please.
Board President, Mr. Hannah.
Yeah.
Board Secretary, Ms. Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan.
Yeah.
Board Member, Mrs. Williams Woolford.
No.
Board Member, Mr. Morris Junior, absent.
Thank you, motion carries. Recommended approval of the Lindop District Ninety-two Accounts Payable for January seventeen, two thousand twenty-five through February twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, in the amount of three hundred and seventy-one thousand, thirty-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents. Can I have a second, please?
Ms. Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Is there a discussion?
Yes.
Let's have it.
So, on Friday, I called to make sure that all the financials and everything would be available in board books. And I was told that if it wasn't, it would be available by Saturday. It wasn't until this evening at four forty-eight P M. that I received a text, the full board did, stating that the bills were in the business office and we could come view them during, um, business hours. How can we properly prepare for a board meeting if all the financials are not made available to the full board in a timely manner and we're made aware of it?
So I would like to just, let me just make a statement. Um, just to clarify, when the phone call came in, it didn't say the financials, it said, will everything be on, um, online? There was no one thing that was in particular, so everything when it comes as far as, um, board books, with the exception of, um, or excuse me, which includes the meeting minutes, um, whatever documentation that is gonna be tagged to whomever it be appointment, um, whatever it is, with the exception of the bills, because the bill, the board bill packet is usually about seven hundred pages. It is front and back, and it takes a very lengthy amount of time to include it into, um, a scanned document, which in last month's, um, scanned document, it was probably about nine hundred and something pages, and it took hours to take things as far as receipts, make copies of it, um, front and back copies of certain bills that are sent to us. And it was actually a file of four different scanned, um, files that was put in. It took a ton of hours. We were here, um, it's at a late midnight hour trying to get these items scanned in. So at that point, it was communicated to our board president that due to the time consumption that it takes, that we will no longer be able to do this unless you all mandate that we do it, but if so, we need time to be able to put this information into board book, which is a lengthy amount of time.
If I can add on.
When was that communicated to the?
We have not been scanning those bills in due to the amount of them. I don't know where you're coming up with all this stuff. You wanna try to all of a sudden bog them down with stuff when they're trying to get us back to speed. We have not been scanning those bills in because they're so numerous.
So.
So who was notified?
Me.
Okay, so why wasn't the full board notified at that time and made aware of when we could come and look at the bills?
Let me tell you this, Benny, like Madam Secretary just said, we ain't been doing. You just started this, you wanted it. This is something that they did. Hold on, don't shake your head no, because this is the truth. And the rest of the board can attend to it. So you wanna talk about it in open session, let's have a discussion. You want, you wanted it, they did it for you that time. This is not something they gonna do every month. If you wanna see them, you come up here and you can look at it.
So the month of December that was communicated, and I did come up here, what I'm saying is.
So you came up here.
What I, but it was not communicated to me. In the month of January, I text several times, communicated by email, asking for bills to be available and asking when will they be available so I can come in and look at them.
When did you start caring? When you start caring so much about saying these things? You this, this ain't, this ain't always been you, Penny. So what I'm asking is that.
What, there's a lot of concerns, that's why we have an audit going on now.
Which is why, which is why these ladies have been in here getting this district back to where it needs to be. And instead of you trying to down them, you need to be telling them thank you for the work that they're doing. They're here at two o'clock in the morning trying to make sure that this board information is correct for us. For us, not you, you not in here at two o'clock in the morning, you in a bad sleep.
I'm sorry that you see me wanting to follow my fiduciary responsibilities and looking at the bills are inconvenienced.
Okay, thank you.
So my question is, when will bills be available for us to look at?
The boards are, the, the bills are available.
In the future.
They're in the board office for you to go down there and read whenever you.
So forty-five minutes before a board meeting, I'm supposed to look at seven hundred documents? So just to clarify, um, with regards to boards, board bills being available for any of the board members to view, they will be available on Friday, um, prior to the board meeting. When the agenda is posted and you all receive your, your board email that the agenda has been posted, as well as the community has been po- um, posted with the agenda online or on our website. If it's not Friday, it will be Saturday because we do wanna follow the Open Meetings Act, and so you have forty-eight hours prior to. We try to make a habit of moving forward, having this information available for you all to look at on Friday. End of Business Day, four thirty, if you give us a call and say that you wanna come in and look at the bills and it's after four thirty, myself, Dr. Best, um, Ms. Kathy, we have no issue with, issue with staying, so you all can definitely look over the bills on Friday. Um, if you want to, after, whenever you get off of work, we'll be more than happy to stay there. Um, the bills were ready at five, or excuse me, at twelve o'clock, um, on Friday for you all to look at. So if that's something you wanna do, moving forward, for the record, bills will be available on Friday by end of Business Day, which is four thirty, because that's when the district office closes. In the event that you wanna see them after four thirty, just notify us via email or a call, and we'll stay to make sure you all are able to come and see the board packet.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Board President, Mr. Hannah.
Yeah.
Board Secretary, Ms. Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Dawson. Board Member, um, Mr. Buchanan, sorry about that. Board Member, Ms. Williams Woolford, no. Board Member, Mr. Morris Junior, Junior, absent.
Thank you, motion carries. Recommend approval of the Lindop District Ninety-two Activity Account Reconciliation for January twenty twenty-five. Can I have a second, please?
Ms. Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Is there a discussion? There is none. Roll call, please.
Board President, Mr. Hannah.
Yeah.
Board Secretary, Ms. Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan.
Yes.
Board Member, Ms. Williams Woolford.
No.
Board Member, Mr. Morris Junior, absent. Motion care.
Thank you, motion carries. Recommend approval of Lindop District Ninety-two Payroll for January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, through February twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, in the amount of five hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-eight cents. Can I have a second, please?
Ms. Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Board President, Mr. Hannah.
Yeah.
Board Secretary, Ms. Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan.
Good.
Board Member, Ms. Williams Woolford.
No.
Board Member, Mr. Morris Junior, absent.
Thank you, motion carries. Eight and nine have already been done, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Oh, business. Um, presentation by Alan Mobley from I A S B A. I A S B, excuse me.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. I appreciate it. Uh, my name is Al Mobley. I'm with the Illinois Association of School Boards, and I'm basically filling in tonight for Dr. Carmen Ayala. Uh, she's also with the I A S B, and she was unable to be here tonight due to some family issues out of state. Uh, I know she was here last month and was prepared to do a brief presentation on the search process that I A S B has, uh, for, uh, a chief, uh, school business official. And, uh, so I'm filling in for her tonight. I'll do the best I can. She's, you know, she's former state superintendent, so I'd like to say she knows a lot more than I do, but we work together in, in, uh, this capacity doing executive searches for I A S B. Uh, just a little bit about myself, I've been doing this for ten years, working with districts, um, in, uh, primarily in the suburban area, in the northern part of the state. I'm a retired superintendent. I was superintendent in Hillside ninety-three for fifteen years, uh, retired ten years ago. And I was there for fifteen as superintendent and principal for five, uh, started my, uh, teaching career in, uh, in Hillside. Actually, Hillside, uh, teaching and coaching, actually coaching in this gym. So I was looking at some of the banners up there, and some of those records were probably, uh, defeats of Hillside. I definitely know that, so. Uh, but anyways, it's nice to be back. I do know a couple of you. We've met previously on different occasions, uh, over the years. So I thank you to, uh, for inviting me to, uh, come and, and kind of just go through, uh, uh, the PowerPoint that Carmen put together, uh, to look at the presentation, or look to the process that we would present to a board, uh, if you were to be hiring us to conduct a search for, uh, a C S B O, very similar to what it would be for a superintendent search. And so the, uh, the process that's outlined in her, uh, PowerPoint here is a lot of the same, so I'll, I'll kind of go through it, but allude to it as if it were for a, a C S B O and any little variations that would be in that case. We actually do searches for, uh, for districts throughout the state. We only work with, uh, bor- boards in. We actually do searches for uh for districts throughout the state. We only work with uh board, boards in the state of Illinois, but we attract candidates from all across the uh the country. We've actually found that when uh administrators, whether they be superintendents or assistant superintendents or business officials, when they're looking to relocate to Illinois, first place they look for uh positions that are posted as vacancies is on our website. And we're also linked to I A S A's website, the Job Bank. We're also then linked to a variety of other uh job sites as well. So we, we cast a pretty wide net as far as attracting candidates for different administrative positions that we uh uh that we conduct searches for. So uh we have a pretty good track record and some of the information in this brief PowerPoint, hopefully will answer some of those questions. Uh afterwards, if you've got questions for me, uh if I'm smart, I'll defer them to Carmen, but you know, I'll try to answer as best I can. Uh, but uh like I said, we work together. Uh, should you use us to do, for this process, we'll work together on it. She would be the lead. I would be the uh uh co-facilitator in terms of consultants. We have, I think, seven consultants that work for I A S B just on executive searches. Like I said, Carmen and I work out of the Lombard office uh in the suburban area. And then we have five other consultants that work out of the Springfield office, but we, we conduct searches all over the state together, so it's a kind of a joint effort. You know, we are the leading uh the market leader in, in Illinois as far as searches. There's a lot of firms that do what we do. Uh, and a lot of them do a good job. We just like to say that we do a better job and we do it for less money. You've paid money to be a part of I A S B. You're a member and we know that. And so, you know, the, whether it's a superintendent search or whether it's a, a, another administrative search such as a C S B O, uh we, we pretty much have a, a pretty rock by, rock bottom cost for you because you've already paid money to be a part of I A S B. So it's a very uh minimal cost as far as that goes. As a former superintendent, this is a fiscal decision. I know that, whether it's for a C S B O, whether it's a superintendent or any other administrator. And so I'm uh, I'm well aware of, of the uh importance of it being a, a cost effective uh decision on your part. So that's one of the things we try to do. We've uh got, we've been doing it for sixty years. And uh we know that one of your, your main responsibilities is to hire the superintendent, but also you're, one of your main responsibilities is also providing that support administrative team uh to make your district successful. And, and I know that you've done that in the past and hopefully we can help you with, with this small piece of the whole administrative team process that uh that you uh that you do. And like I said, we're the only one, only organization in Illinois that only serves Illinois school districts and boards in Illinois in, in these, in these efforts. Uh, we attract candidates from across the country. Like I said, we're part of a nationwide organization for superintendent searchers, but that also then dovetails into searching for uh C S B Os and other administrators as well. It's called uh N A S. We really uh work hard at trying to attract diverse top quality candidates. Uh, we have a very extensive organization and association link networking throughout Illinois with different groups. In this case, especially uh for a school business official, uh we would work very closely with I A S B, the Illinois Association of School Business Officials, and also the uh, the American Association of School Business Officials as well at the national level. And we also have uh about seven thousand recipients uh of an email. Anytime we have a vacancy, whether it's for a superintendent or business official or assistant superintendent, uh we have a recipient list of about seven thousand, uh usually administrators across the state uh who are involved in different levels of administration. So they will get the vacancy listing that we get uh that we would send out. And so the notifications go out uh quite broadly for this position. This is kind of a graphic representation of the different organizations that we work with uh in advertising and promoting administrative positions that we uh, uh that we are conducting the search for. The, the search components, as I said, Carmen put this together, you know, as kind of a superintendent search process, but it, it's very similar for uh for school business officials. Uh, I'll kind of walk you through the steps, you know, that we would certainly come up with a more specific timeline. Uh, once you, you know, and I, I, I think that you have definitely agreed to use us in, in this process. Uh, and so we'll, she will put together, we've uh spent more specific timeline to share with you, uh maybe at next month's meeting. I'm not exactly sure, but uh she will be in contact with uh, with, with, with you, Dr. Best, as well as uh myself. And we'll kind of be together on this as far as the, the process from this point on. Uh, there, in a search superintendent search, we gather a lot more uh stakeholder input than normally would be within a, a school business official, because this is more of a, of a superintendent and board decision than it is uh than is involving stakeholder input on this. But that would be another piece that, that is always there as a possibility. But we will put together the ideal candidate profile uh based on some information gathered from you and also from uh, from your superintendent. We'll put together the announcement of vacancy brochure. Uh, it's a brochure. It's like a quad fold brochure that gets posted on P, in PDF form on, like I said, our site, as well as all the job sites that we're linked to. And then we open the application. The applications are done through frontline uh Apple Track, which is the most common online application system. Uh, we, usually we keep the application open for about four to five weeks. Uh, that allows a, a significant amount of time for potential candidates to get all their material submitted uh to us, which would involve not only the online application itself, which is a very extensive uh set of questions and work history and so on, but also then uh we require a complete resume. We complyer, require complete uh transcripts. We require uh certification from Illinois, uh state of Illinois, that somebody is licensed to be a C S B O in the state of Illinois. Uh, we don't want to bring you somebody that doesn't have their current, current Illinois licensure. We think that's important uh for any board interviewing any administrative or for a superintendent interviewing in the administrative position uh that they have current Illinois licensure. So we verify that. Uh, we also re- require uh at least three current references, uh three current recommendations. And we, we know a lot of people in the area. We know a lot of administrators. And so we make follow-up contacts with those recommendation or those references uh to just get follow-up information on these candidates. And usually if it's somebody applying for a C S B O, we would expect them to use their current superintendent, possibly uh a board member as a, as a recommendation, possibly uh, uh if they're working with a, an assistant superintendent for business, for example, or another similar type of position, we would expect a, a recommendation from uh one of those people. We analyze and conduct screen interviews of the applications that are submitted. Uh, as I said, we uh verify the references and then we would present to you a final slate of candidates. Usually anywhere from four to six in terms of the finalists. It varies, uh varies in terms of the pool and how deep the pool is as far as quality candidates. And we try to narrow down that initial pool to a, a slate that uh would make sense for you to consider for this position. Uh, and we can work with you in terms of interviewing if need be. Again, I'm not exactly sure what your plan is as far as interviewing for this position. Sometimes with C S B Os and, and other non-supernintendent positions, the boards leave it to the superintendent to, to do this and then maybe bring you information on the final candidates that you might want to talk to. Again, I haven't really talked about how that, that's going to proceed. Maybe, you know, Carmen will talk to you and she and I will kind of make sure that we're all on the same page with that as well. Uh, it's like, it's a little different, whereas if it were a superintendent search, I would come and meet with you in closed session with a slate of four to six finalists, their information, and we'd go through that. And then we'd arrange the interview uh, uh logistics from that point on. So that's kind of a, that's a little variation in terms of the, of the process itself. Uh, the fee uh is based on en- enrollment. Uh, we had, we have a fee that's just a, you know, it's a standard, you know, establishment based on the enrollment of a district. Uh, with, with a position like this, uh it, it's, it would be the same for anybody in uh with your size of district, it's the lowest of our, in our fee structure. And uh there are some additional pieces that tend to fall more into the superintendent search realm, such as focus groups uh with community members and so on, uh practice interviewing, and also a stakeholder input at the end as far as final interviews. Those tend to be more options that would be for a superintendent's uh search uh with this uh C S B O. It's a little bit different in that there's not quite as much of the other pieces that uh, that a board might want to include. Uh, you can't see that very well, but uh this, this was a tentative timeline that Carmen had put together. Uh, it's adjusted a little bit now that we're into, into February, but uh the, the, the definite hope would be to be able by uh, by April, by the end of April uh is to have a, a, a posi- person in place that you as a board would be able to approve. So uh that would be the uh, that's a very doable process. When we, when you do a superintendent search, we usually look at about a, about a four-month total process uh for uh superintendent search. So a position like this probably is a little bit less uh because it's a more defined as far as uh the pool of candidates would be uh, uh those who would be coming looking for a, 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 a business position. Um, as far as why choose us, I mean, I, I don't have to sell you on us. I, I, I think that, you know, our work, you know, speaks for itself, but you know, as far as superintendents, our, our track record's very good. Ninety-five percent of the superintendents that we've placed in searches are still in their positions, which is uh, uh quite a good longevity record. Uh, we, we continue the process until we find the right person, just like with a superintendent search, uh we continue until that right fit is found. Um, we also have a guarantee, whereas at the end of uh a year, after the end of one year, if that person for this position either leaves on their own or leaves by your choice, uh then we would come back and do another search at no cost. Uh, that's the same as we would do for a superintendent where there's kind of a money-back guarantee type of thing there, but we would come back and do it at no cost. We've worked with counties all across the state. We've, you know, worked with just over almost seven hundred districts now as far as either superintendent or other administrative searches. And uh, I, I think very, very honestly, in having worked with I A S B with, for ten years now, after having been a superintendent, I, I feel that the process and, and the effort that's put in by all of our consultants is really, really board-friendly. And really our, our goal is to find that right person for you. And uh, I know Carmen and I would be very happy to work with you. Again, I'm gonna defer to her to kind of take the lead on this when she's able to get back with you, but uh I'm glad to be asked to fill in and work with her as well, especially knowing, uh knowing that uh the district like, like I do. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. What questions? Uh, I think that's the last slide. Yeah, so uh what, what questions maybe that I can ask, answer for you real quickly here?
Board members, go ahead. I, I don't have any just yet. Okay, mine is, you know.
Yeah, I, oh, absolutely. I get that completed because it's kind of the first presentation piece here, so.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't have any for you just yet, Mr. Mobley, but I'm sure you'll hear from me or one of us eventually.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So Mr. Mobley, as you head a single unit district as well, and Lindop is too. So my concern is um attracting someone that would stay and that would be highly qualified because we're a single unit district, little less than three hundred kiddos.
Sure.
And um, you know, that's one concern. Can you help me out with that?
Yeah, and, and that's, and that's a great question. And it's something that we, you know, we, we deal with, with the smaller districts, even in the suburban area, as far as the stepping stone, kinda, kinda, kinda process, you know, mentality. But I, I don't think we find that as much in suburban Cook County as we do in other places. Uh, even though it's a smaller district, you know, I think that, you know, the whole township area, you know, as a uh, as a whole, i- i- it's a great place. And I think that the school districts and the feeder districts into the high school, you know, are all very strong. And I think that uh, I think the attractiveness of being in this area is probably even a little bit greater than maybe you expect. And I know you've been in this position for a long time as part of, you know, the district, you know, maybe as, um, your others have too. But I, I think that we don't see as much of that stepping stone mentality in Cook County as we do in other places. I think it will attract some candidates. I think that um it's also a transition year administratively because it's of board elections. It affects superintendent positions. It affects other administrative positions as far as people wanting to make a change. And that's something that will uh, you know, play into it. Also, you know, uh, school business officials uh are less transient, let's say, as, as superintendents are. They, they tend to maybe be in an area a little bit longer than, than a superintendent. Uh, that's not a good answer. I've kind of danced around it as best I can without giving you a good answer, but I, I understand the concern. And I think that, you know, when we look at the applicants and conduct the screening interviews, which we do, she and I would do them together uh before presenting the candidates uh to you or to the superintendent, uh we, we would talk about that and talk about, you know, you know, the desire as far as being in a district and being able to, you know, help in a, you know, getting in the district, you know, you, you alluded to earlier as far as getting back to where you want to be. And, and you know, I don't know what that means, but I think that you do. And so I think that having somebody who comes in and that, you know, with that kind of a mentality is going to be important.
And so I.
That's, but that, that's a good question and a good concern. I mean, I, I certainly, I echo that, having been experienced in a small one-school district.
Right. So I have two more questions. And you kind of led up to the other one. Um, in terms of you said that you would want like a recommendation from the superintendent or who they reported to. But like you said, it's election year, so maybe they're leaving, but don't want to share that yet. Like, do you still look at those candidates that may not have a recommendation from the superintendent? Because, like you said, it's election year, things are kind of shaky, whatever, and they may be thinking about leaving, but not ready to fully disclose their hand to where they are in case they don't get the job.
And, and that whole, oh, I'm sorry. The, the confidentiality piece is a key thing. And I know, you know, in, in speaking with, you know, in, in speaking in terms of superintendent searches, for example, we, we, we assure candidates that, that are concerned about that, not wanting to show their hand yet, you know, for the initial steps, you know, we, we maintain that confidentiality. When it comes to those final interviewing pieces, you know, we have an obligation to make sure that we've checked references and let them know that this person is applying for a position. And we, we tell the candidates that as well, that first round of interviews or how, you know, early in the process, we'll keep the confidentiality for you because of that exact reason that you alluded to. Uh, but the further along in the process they go, uh it's harder to do that, especially in a superintendent search, where usually in those final stages, you've got more people involved in the interviewing process.
I get it with the superintendent. It's just the chief business official for this particular role, I'm wondering.
So, so we'll uh, so, you know, we, we let them know that there's still going to have to be some follow-up and recommendation checking on our part. And therefore, that supervisor, whoever it may be, is ultimately going to know. And so we encourage them to at least share, you know, with them that, you know, there, you may be looking for another position.
And then my final question is, this timeline, thank you very much for timelines.
Uh huh.
I'm sorry, my voice.
No, no, that's.
Kind of gone. But um initially, you guys were looking at like a April fifteenth end date, but starting January twenty-first. You still think you can meet that goal by April fifteenth? Is that board meeting day or something? Or April fifteenth?
That was the timeline that was established for last month, but because we were not able to hold the regular board meetings, we are behind. So it's not going to be exactly to that at this mo- at this moment.
So that's what I was.
Oh, yeah, so.
Because initially, his presentation, he said he still thought he would be.
We, we'll try, we'll try for that. Uh, but like I said, we, we want the application to be open, you know, a legit amount of time to give credibility to the process. So, you know, this is what, February eighteenth, nineteenth, uh, you know, getting, getting started right away. We'll get started right away, putting the brochure together in the next couple of information, getting information in the next couple of days to start putting it together and have that posted as soon as possible. And I'm going to be speaking with Dr. Ayala uh before the end of this week, definitely. And we'll get her plans on, you know, where she sees it going from that point. Maybe extending it a little bit beyond that might be more of a reality, but we'll do our best and work very hard to try to get that end of April uh consideration in there.
Okay.
I, I wish I could give you a, a definite date on that, but we'll shoot for that as best we can. You know, ultimate hiring may actually require, you know, a special meeting on your part. We don't know, but if we can at least get to the point where we have a, a candidate that, you know, can be referred to you by the superintendent, then that would certainly be the, the hope. Good, that's a great question too, because it's all kind of quickly coming together here. Other questions? And I know it's a lot really quickly. I appreciate you, you know, hearing me out tonight because uh, you know, I, I just kind of, you know, was happy to, you know, come and at least walk you through the process. And I know that uh Carmen will be back af- actively involved in this uh piece from, from this point on, so.
Looks like there are no more.
Thank you.
Thank you though.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate it. It's nice to see you. Appreciate it. And uh, if I don't, if I don't see you anymore and she does, I still wish you the best and I'll be working behind the scenes in the process as well.
Thank you so much.
Thanks a lot.
We appreciate it. Madam Principal, the mic is yours. State of the district.
Good evening, board members, community members, teachers and staff. Thank you so much for being here. So I am going to talk to you on what's happening in the district. Yay. All right, when it comes to our school, we just finished testing. So I'm going to report some instructional data for you. However, when we look at our students in terms of the levels, we go from level five to level one. Level one being exceeding expectations all the way to level one, which is does not meet expectations. So if you look here, all right, so I'd like to say that um what I'm showing you is preliminary data. So again, this is preliminary data. But I have to let you know, grade three. To Ms. Evans and Ms. Barrett, they are rocking it when it comes to math as well as E L A in terms of their proficiency. So again, we're doing a deep dive and we'll be going over that next month, but I wanted to show you that grade three is really rocking it when it comes to English Language Arts as well as mathematics. Again, this is just preliminary. We did have some, uh, we just finished wrapping up map testing. when it comes to English Language Arts as well as mathematics. Again, this is just preliminary. We did have some uh, we just finished wrapping up map testing because we had some students that weren't able to test during due to illnesses and so forth. So the next one shows you the E L A. And again, grade three, Ms. Evans and Ms. Barrett are rocking it. So if you see them, teachers, students, congratulate grade three in terms of rocking it with math as well as E L A. Now, also, when it comes to attendance, I have some good news on attendance. So we were able to move from the December's board meeting, we were able to move four students who are chronically absent off the chronically absent list. That's hard work from the teachers as well as the students, as well as the parents, hearing phone calls from me, calling them continuously, where are your children? Why aren't they in school? So we were able to move four students, and that's tremendous growth in terms of what we're doing here at Lindup. So as you can see here, um, just like Ms. Wolford stated, roughly three hundred, but exactly, we had two hundred ninety seven students from pre K to grade eight as of January thirty first. And this data that I'm showing you is a hundred and one days of attendance here at school. So when we look at truancy, we have twelve students that were truant. Truant means that they had unexcused, nine or more unexcused absences. So we had twelve students out of two hundred ninety seven students. When it comes to chronically absent last in December, we had fifty, we now have forty six. So at fifty percent, when it comes to McKinney Vento students, we have no McKinney Vento students that are chronically absent. When it comes to males and females, so if you look here, you'll see that twenty four males and twenty two females are absent. When it comes to their ethnicity, we see here that nine percent are African American or black, Hispanic or Latino, that's five percent. When it comes to two or more races, four students, which is one percent, and we have zero percent that are white. When it comes to individualized educational plan, so when we're talking about special services, if you look there, we only have, let's see here, let me make it bigger for myself. We only have eight students with individualized educational plans that are chronically absent. And no students with five oh four pens are chronically absent. In terms of low income, forty three students are considered low income out of that forty nine, forty six. And then uh multilingual learners, we only have six that are considered chronically absent. So good job. When it comes to the grade levels, good job, Ms. Jones and Ms. Urban Bolden, they had zero, zero students. Congratulations. Zero students that were chronically absent in grade five. So zero, yes, zero students. So you can see here, pre K, we have eight students, kindergarten, six, grade one, two, grade uh two, we had five students. Grade three, six students, grade four, two students. Again, grade five, it's zero students. Grade six, four students, grade um seven, six students, and eighth grade, we have seven students as well. So again, what I'm doing is I'm calling the parents, and this time what I did was send out notification to all parents regarding attendance so that they know that attendance matters. They know that their child needs to be in school every day and making sure that the students, if they are absent, are using our hotline. When it comes to attendance, the mayor, uh Mayor Katrina Thompson was gracious enough to honor our students with a certificate for being uh for being for having perfect attendance. So here is a picture of the students that were perfect with perfect attendance. And she also gave three of our students fifty dollar Target gift cards. Students got certificates as well as kids' meals from Chick-fil-A. So congratulations to those students. We are partnering with the mayor, so she's doing this for the second trimester as well as the third trimester in terms of perfect attendance. So yay. All right, when it comes to our trips, I'm going to give it over to Dr. Robertson.
And if I can add, um, the students that won the gift certificate, she did a shout out with the robo calls. I don't know if that's what you call them. That's what we used to. So that was really cool.
Yes, it was. And you're going to hear them again twice. So for trimester two and trimester three. All right, Doctor.
Good evening, board members, staff, teachers and administration and community members. I am excited to talk to you about our upcoming eighth grade trip, where as soon as we'll have a local adventure to Chicago downtown.
Thank you so much.
Some of the highlights for this trip is that they would be able to experience the three hundred sixty view and tilts. They would be able to go to the world famous Cheesecake Factory for dinner. Um, they will also take a tour of downtown Chicago on their own private double decker tour bus. Some of the highlights of their trip would be able to see the Chicago River Wall, go to the Sky Deck Chicago, go to the Autumn Palaterium, Navy Pier Water Tower, just to name a few.
They staying overnight? They staying overnight?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
They staying overnight?
No, this would be a one day trip. They're starting the day and they come back in the evening. Yes. The financial cost for this trip would be for the double decker bus is one thousand one hundred fifty dollars. The Cheesecake Factory, the approximate cost is six hundred twenty five dollars. For the tilt and view, that cost would be one thousand dollars for a total cost of two thousand seven hundred seventy five dollars with a cost per student of one hundred eleven dollars. We have approximately a little over twenty students who are eligible to attend this trip. Uh, we have a eighth grade criteria to attend trips such as um no more than three office referrals as well as a G P A of two point O. We are excited about our upcoming um trip that we are in the process of planning for two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six. We are currently changing how we approach our out of town trips. We are now allowing seventh and eighth grade to attend the trips together, which will allow more access to our students for them to have a wonderful experience as well as we will receive a lower rate. And then starting earlier in order to give parents a longer period of time of pain over a longer period of time so that it can be more accessible to more of our parents. The trip to Washington D C, some of the highlights would be that's included in the costs is the hotel accommodations, transportation, all of the transportation um from the airport um throughout the time that they're in D C, all of their meals and all of the attractions and activities. Some of the places that our wonderful seventh and eighth grade students will be able to experience is seeing the Jefferson Memorial, Martin Luther King Junior Memorial, Lincoln Memorial, as well as going to Smithsonian museums and one of them being the African American Museum, which is amazing. Yes. Uh, the World War Two Memorial, as well as the White House, the Korean War Memorial, the Vietnam Veterans Memorial, as well as the Washington Monument. The dates of our trip would be from October twenty second, April. April, April twenty second through the twenty third of two thousand twenty six, with a deposit to secure um their space for one hundred fifteen dollars. The cost per student is one thousand twenty five dollars. Um, the transportation cost within that fee is four hundred fifty dollars. And the cost without transportation per student is five hundred seventy five dollars. And we're excited about this opportunity for our students. Thank you so much.
I have one question. First of all, the statement, you guys have done a wonderful job and I commend you for that. But are they going to have some type of fundraiser to help with that?
Yeah, so we've had fundraisers in which um the students were able to sell chocolates. Um, that also the um our wonderful um Ms. Williams and Ms. Stewart also helps have a concession stand fundraisers for our eighth grade families as well. So we're trying to raise money for our students. Yes, thank you so much. Yes, ma'am.
Um, this is more so to the Board of Education. In the past, we've helped out um with the students. We have the fund for transportation and since we are a district that sits in the middle, you know, of our mall, we don't really use bus services like that. So is there any way possible that we can consider next month, putting it on the agenda? I think I was trying to copy it down. On the first trip, it's like a thousand or a little over a thousand for the transportation part. And on this one is four hundred and fifty dollars per student on the transportation part. If we could, you know, pick that up, that'll lighten the load for families and uh make it a little bit more affordable, I think that would be helpful. And then my other question, I guess this is for you guys now. Um, so the first trip was just for the eight current eighth graders, right?
Yes.
And the second trip is for the
Future.
Next year's seventh and eighth graders, right?
Current sixth graders and seventh graders.
Okay, so is it possible the state umcation, I call it? Um, is it possible to include the seventh graders? Uh, don't answer me now, just a wondering. I'm wondering if the seventh graders could be included in that trip to kind of expand the number of students because the double decker, I don't know how much it'll go up with just putting some more kids on that and how many probably qualify or whatever, but that's maybe something you don't have to answer.
Yeah, no, I.
Something you can wonder and talk to assistant superintendent um bets or whatever, just wondering about that.
That's a great idea. We'll talk about it. Thank you so much.
Yeah, but I'm sorry, going back to the board. If we could use our transportation funds to kind of lift this load off our families, that would be wonderful. Yeah. The double decker is eleven uh eleven fifty. That would kind of help lift that load, maybe make that about half the cost instead of one hundred and eleven, it may make it about fifty something.
We can bring a proposal for the board to fund a portion of this at the March meeting. Um, and I believe that's why Dr. R is kind of breaking it down for you to to try to lay the groundwork to see if also for the Washington D C trip, if you would be willing to consider funding it in the upcoming year, the transportation portion of it. So um we'll bring that back in March for sure. Thank you.
Also, I think that would be something that would go through our finance person to see what our finances are during that time.
Well, is it okay if I go now?
Yes.
I I kind of wanted, Penny took it right out of my mouth. Um, I was sitting here thinking that there's got to be a way that the board can cover something, some of this for these students. So just know that we'll get back to you guys with how much we'll pay or when we'll pay and what we're paying. But just know that the board will take up some of this. I know for sure, as I sat here and listened, I looked around, I seen heads nodding and, you know. So I think the board will be covering some of this for you guys, okay?
We are so, so grateful. Thank you so much for even considering it. It'll be a meaningful for our students and families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
It's really nice. They're not done, Mr. Jessic.
Good evening, board members, community members, staff members and administration. Um, for special services, it has been a pretty busy busy second semester, completing the slick cyclical monitoring system for the state. It was three hundred page report. Um, so that was completed and the report has been submitted to the state for review and waited on their response. Scheduled meetings, conducted meetings, participated in outplace meetings, com- completed a site visit with um a parent on a visit, data meetings and continuous training for the entire special education team and special services. McKinney Vento, we are, as you could see for the attendance, we are staying in touch, making sure our parents are okay and our students are doing okay. We completed all map testing. Data will be shared with the building in regards to as one whole, that's how that will be um shared with you. M T S S, which is the multi-tier support system, data has been uploaded. We do own M T S S software that is out of Embrace, which is our individual education plan. There is multi-tiered software we do own. We are utilizing that software this year with second trimester reports already being loaded up. The intervention team has put their reports in there, special education team in regards to utilizing fast bridge testing for additional data point. And it has additional tracking capabilities for progress monitoring that we would not and do not have with MAP. So that's why the fast bridge is being utilized for tier three interventions as well as special education students. Any questions before I go to pre K?
Congratulations with that M T S S. You know, I love data.
It's a lot of sweat with them, but it is going well. It has been an amazing journey this week, this year with M T S S, especially utilizing that software. Now for the pre K, I know this is one of your favorite parts of the reports because you always love to see the kids, so I have gotten into this rhythm of saying, I need pictures. If they don't get pictures, they gotta see the pictures. We love to see the baby pictures. So of course they did send me pictures. Pre K has been very busy. January twenty fifth, road ready for kindergarten night, sixteen families attended. Three three-year-olds and four-year-old students attended. And February fourteenth was a pre K screening from twelve to three thirty. It was by appointment only. It was advertised throughout the community. It was signs on our doors. It was signs everywhere. So making sure that we got our students in as we plan for twenty five, twenty six and making sure our students are for our classrooms are fully set. Um, we have enough students, getting all our students in. Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Nope, but thank you.
Excellent job.
Go ahead, go ahead. What he was about to say.
I'm saying Mr. Ballantyne.
Oh, Mr. Ballantyne, you got something to tell us, Mr. B?
Oh, okay. His name was on there too. That's why I was just telling.
Yeah, he said he don't have nothing.
Oh, okay. No, I I was just telling Mr. I have a dis- I saw him.
Okay, all right. Well, we didn't forget you, Ballantyne. All right, here we go. New business.
Okay. Cheryl Griffin, I make a motion to approve the resolution directing the Cook County Clerk to abate real estate taxes of three hundred and ninety one thousand five hundred and thirty dollars for the property tax relief grant for levy year twenty twenty five as presented. Whereas the Illinois School Code one oh five I L C S one five, excuse me, five one dash three dash one seven zero Act provides a property tax relief pool fund, which enables school districts to apply for grants that compensate the school district for reductions in their property tax levies, allowing the districts to lower their property taxes with minimum or no loss to the district. And whereas Lindop School District number ninety two concurs with the intent of the Act to reduce reliance on the property tax as a means to provide adequate school funding. And whereas Lindop District ninety two pursuant to the Act submitted a property tax relief grant application for fiscal year twenty twenty five to the Illinois State Board of Education. And whereas the Illinois State Board of Education found that Lindop School District ninety two is eligible to receive a twenty twenty five property tax relief grant in the amount of two hundred and eighty two thousand dollars, nine hundred and fourteen. And whereas, in order to receive the grant, the Act requires the school district to abate three hundred and ninety one thousand five hundred and thirty dollars in property tax expected to levy in the year twenty twenty five. And whereas the school district finds and declares that it is in the best interest of the school district to abate the property taxes pursuant to the Act. Now, therefore, be it resolved and ordained by the Board of Education of Lindop School District ninety two that the Cook County Clerk for the County of Cook is hereby directed to abate the real estate taxes of three hundred and ninety one thousand five hundred and thirty dollars in taxes expected for levy year twenty twenty five as follows. Number one, the foregoing recitals are hereby incorporated into section one as if said recitals were fully set forth herein. Number two, the Cook County Clerk for County Cook, for Cook County is authorized to lower the school district's levy by three hundred and ninety one thousand five hundred and thirty dollars for levy year twenty twenty five. The Cook County Clerk for Cook County is authorized to reduce the amount collected for the school district by three hundred and ninety one thousand five hundred and thirty dollars for levy year twenty twenty five. Adopted this eighteenth day of February twenty twenty five pursuant to a roll call vote as follows.
President Hannah seconded that motion. Any discussions?
Somebody's.
So, oh, is this the, is this the? Is this the, is this the last year of the, of the grant, the tax relief grant?
No, it's not the last year. We applied in January. You approved our applying in December. We applied in January. We received notice about two weeks ago that we were going to receive this grant. So we will be receiving the two hundred and eighty two thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars. In the third year, it's going to be added to our evidence-based funding base. And that's going to be going forward. That's the benefit of having the property tax relief grant besides the goodwill to the community. This three hundred and ninety one thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars that we're abating is worth about a hundred to a hundred and twenty five dollars per household. When it gets, when it's, when all is said and done, it's on an average of a two hundred and twenty five, two hundred and thirty thousand dollar house. It's about a hundred and twenty five thousand. So this grant is actually for two years. We, last year, we actually filed both twenty three and twenty four. So we're only filing twenty five this year. There's no talk of this grant going away for next year. We'll apply again next year. It's completely, it depends on, it's competitive. In respect to, it looks at the number of students you have. It looks at the community and the financial ability of the taxpayers. There's a lot of different factors. And then they actually look at your EAV and they look to see if the district can actually afford it. So besides us looking at it, the state also reviews all our financials to make sure that they aren't approving this abatement and it would hurt us. So, any questions?
Oh, I think this is gonna be helpful for people getting a little change back in their.
I had one concern. Now with this, I know before when we had the property type tax relief grant, there were a lot of people within the community that said they didn't see anything, whereas they had actually received it. We will publish something this time around so they'll know basically how it was handled.
Yeah, what we can do is the school district receives a agency report in June. The agency report will show what our current EAV and what our limiting rate, which is the multiplier for our EAV that depends, that tells you how much tax you're gonna pay. What we'll do is we'll show, we will put notes on it. And I've done that with another one. We'll put notes on it and it will show because you're going to see both on this, on this agency report, what the rate was before the grant and what the rate is. And you'll see that that number on the bottom, when it actually multiplies the amount we're going to get, they'll actually see that they're using the lower number. So they'll see that we can put, this is the dollar amount that you would have paid if without the property tax relief grant every, that the whole district would have divided. We can divide it to get a, a dollar amount. And this is with the property tax relief grant, what you'll get. So we can use a sample tax bill too. Which I've got some from last year that we can, we can update this year.
I guess my biggest concern is like you just said, the average household might get such and such. Say an estimated amount. You will have that because a lot of the people, you know, when you add the two, they're not really doing the math. It's like, how much is it gonna be to me? Just putting that estimated amount per household.
Yeah, I think what we'll do is we'll show a tax bill that will actually show them. They can look at where their house is in value, in relationship to the value of the sample house. And you'll see all the other taxing bodies. So you'll see what the percentages are. So you'll see actually our reduced rate on the tax bill as well as a reduced rate. So we can do a little link on the website that, kind of a little PowerPoint.
That probably will help too, Kathy. I'm gonna go ahead.
I was gonna say that because the last, in the fall, there was some concerns about that. And, and at the time, the chief business official presented. Because we don't see it on our actual bill. It's on the back end. And so, you know, we want to look on our tax bill and see a hundred and whatever dollars, but it doesn't work like that. So it would be helpful to see it on the website as well as if we can get it out in the newsletter. Because then we know it goes to every house. In a friendly way that it supports all people, meaning that if a person is not tech savvy. You know, a QRC code for somebody that's not tech savvy, that's not gonna help. So some kind of way communicating it in our newsletter, therefore we know it's gonna hit everybody for sure.
I wish I had brought a sample of the.
But you've done a wonderful job. We really do appreciate you.
Thank you. I'll put that together so you have that available.
I had a question regarding the newsletter. Does that go out to the entire village of Broadview? Because you have a number of families that don't have children, so they would know how it's affected.
I was just about to say, it probably only goes to our Lindah district, but people from, you know, in our area, in the boundaries. So it might be something that we, we can consider to make sure all of Robby gets it.
Yes, we do a bulk mailing every time we do a newsletter and it goes to every household in the community.
Thank you. All right. Yes, Whitfield, I think you're ready for you.
And it's, I'm sorry, it's only for Linda, so it wouldn't apply to all. Just the Linda community.
What we could do, and I've seen it in the newspaper, they'll do like a press release. And then that way it'll be in the newspaper saying Linda community gives three hundred thousand dollars back to the community. That would be a good look.
We got a good PR guy, so don't worry.
Doesn't everyone pay taxes into this?
Our PR person is out in the audience. I'm sure he got that right.
I'm, I'm just saying.
We can do it again.
Our PR, I tell you, we got a good PR person.
That's SpongeBob News.
That's right. For sure. Thank you guys so much. Ms. Kathy, thank you. Thank you, PR. All right, roll call please.
So just to confirm, the motion was made by Ms. Griffin. The second was made by Mr. Hannah. And so Board President, Mr. Hannah. Board Secretary, Ms. Griffin. Board Member, Mr. Dawson. Board Member, Mr. Buchanan. Board Member, Mrs. Williams-Wolfer. Board Member, Mr. Morris Jr. Absent.
Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Dawson?
Mr. Valentine is gonna come up here.
Is we gonna make the motion first?
Make the motion first?
Then to do discussion, yeah.
Brian Dawson, I make a motion to approve the payment of thirty one thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars to Precision Control System for replacing the burner and boiler number two. The considerable damage was discovered during routine cleaning of the burner. Necessitating its replacement as this nozzle is the most critical component of the burner and was not repairable.
I second Hannah. Mr. Valentine, it's on you.
Good evening, Board of Education, Community and Staff. To give you some information on the necessary emergency boiler repairs that was need to be done. During, so to give some background of the boilers, our boilers are twenty years old. It was manufactured in two thousand and two. We do our annual inspection on the boilers yearly. Typically that consists of just doing the combustion analysis, checking out, checking for proper operation. Checking the motorized valves and circulation pumps. But every five years, we do a complete teardown of the boilers where we take the burner off and check the refractory work inside the boilers. So it was due this year for the refractory work to be checked. So during inspection of the boilers, we had the refractory work done and we noticed that the boiler on the boiler two was beyond repair. So it was authorized by to get this replaced. This is the picture of the first boiler, the damage to the boiler in the night I had looked at first. And the next picture will show you the new burner that was installed. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Roll call please.
Board President, Mr. Hannah. Board Secretary, Ms. Griffin. Board Member, Mr. Dawson. Board Member, Mr. Buchanan. Board Member, Mrs. Williams-Wolfe. Board Member, Mr. Morris Jr. Absent.
Thank you. Motion carries. Madam Secretary.
Okay. Cheryl Griffin, I make a motion to adopt the Vision Twenty Thirty Board Resolution of Support.
I second Hannah.
Wait, wait, we're not done. I gotta read off. Okay, Illinois Vision Twenty Thirty, whereas public education plays a defining role in ensuring equal, equal opportunity for children in Illinois and throughout the United States. And whereas it is our collective duty to ensure that every student, regardless of demographic or geographic, geographic identity has equal access to a quality public education. And whereas we believe that strides need to be proactively made to face challenges and continually improve our public education system. And whereas there have been three areas of prioritization identified as integral in improving our public education system. Future-focused learning, shared accountability and predictable funding. And whereas future-focused learning should address promoting future-driven skills that allow for more college and career exploration, enhancing student safety and well-being. Attracting and retaining a high-quality and diverse educator pipeline and promoting curriculum and instruction, instructional flexibility to meet unique needs of local communities. And whereas shared accountability should address reforming the Illinois Assessment System to be timely and use and useful measure of student proficiency and growth over time. Reforming the current accountability system to provide local flexibility for identifying indicators that create a more holistic view of student success and reforming the mandate process to ensure implementation procedures that promote flexibility and local discussion-making. And whereas predictable funding should address protecting the integrity and funding of the evidence-based funding formula. Strengthening public education through pension reforms and establishing equitable funding sources for capital and safety needs. And whereas it is imperative that any education improvement proposal for comprehensive change must be developed and supported by not only the education community, but in collaboration with families, communities, businesses and others who, whose priorities reflect the best interests of the students. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lindop School District ninety two Board of Education joins with the Illinois Association of School Boards, School Administrators. Which is IASA, Illinois Association of School Boards. IASB, Illinois Principal Associations. IPA, Illinois Association of School Business Officials. IASBO, Illinois Association of Regional Superintendents of Schools. IARS, Superintendent's Commission on the Study of Demographics and Diversity. SCSD, Illinois Alliance of Special Education Administrators. IAASE and the Association of Illinois Rural and Small Schools. AIRSS in supporting the Vision Twenty Thirty Education Improvement Policy and be it further resolved that Lindop School District ninety two of Education urges the General Assembly to approve the necessary legislative changes to implement the recommendations under the three pillars of education improvement as contained in Vision Twenty Thirty Policy. Adopted this eighteenth day of February twenty twenty five. Can I get a second?
I seconded. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Dr. Betts.
Thank you. So Vision Twenty Thirty really lands on four goals ultimately. They're keeping students safe, keeping high-quality educators in front of students, enhancing post-secondary success. And improving measurement of what is working because we do spend quite a bit of time focusing on what is not working. So if you there's a graphic of, I don't know where you guys are, but that's not where, if you could come back. There's a graphic of the, next slide, please. There's a graphic of the organizations that have partnered in order to come up with this Vision Twenty Thirty. And next slide, please. One of the major things that they're coming together on is to ask for some mandate relief. The Illinois School Code has doubled since the year two thousand. And so one of their focuses is around trying to streamline all of these systems that we have in place from assessments to you know, whatever it may be with our, our policies to our curriculum and all of the mandates that are coming into those areas. Next slide, please. One of the ways they're looking at doing that is to focus on the future in learning. So promoting future-driven skills, enhancing student safety and well-being. So thinking not just about your student achievement and growth in the content areas, but promoting social emotional learning and developing the whole child. They want more curriculum and instructional flexibility. So again, that goes back to those mandates that they, they lessen the mandates and allow for that increased local control. Next slide, please. One of the ways that they would like to go about lessening those mandates is again, shared accountability. So reforming the Illinois Assessment System, which as you know, is a large and beefy system in itself and has some measures of proficiency that far exceed the national norms and the way that, that schools are ranked nationally. So looking at how we might address our assessments to make them adaptable and to align them to what is considered proficient nationwide and not just in Illinois. Next slide, please. Another way that they look at lessening the mandates is the predictable funding. So they want to protect the integrity of the evidence-based funding formula, but also establish equitable statewide funding sources for capital and safety needs because there is a lot of disparity across the state from district to district in terms of tax bases, et cetera. So depending on where you live, it may affect the outcomes of your education right now. They also want to enhance the financial flexibility of school districts. So again, bringing it back to a more local control wouldn't mean that there are no mandates, but it would mean that there's some flexibility in terms of how you meet your criteria. Next slide, please. This brings us back to the four key goals. So this is again what they're driving at, keeping students safe, keeping high-quality educators in front of students, developing that pipeline. Enhancing the post-secondary success and improving measurement of what is working. And the final slide on Vision Twenty Thirty does include a QR code. There's a ton of information. There's an entire book if you would like to read it. We can get you any of that information. You're also welcome to scan that QR code. So you'll be hearing more about this in the upcoming months. Thank you.
All right. It's been properly, the motion has been, I gotta.
Normally we'll have something come for presentation and discussion and then the next month we vote. Is there any disadvantage if we didn't vote on it tonight? So a lot of opportunity to explore more. Just wondering. And is this, is supported by IASB?
It is supported by IASB. They are asking boards to adopt it. If you go on to the Vision Twenty Thirty website, you can see which boards around the state have already adopted. There are quite a few. One of the, the purposes of tonight is to be unified around those goals and those goals align to the current board goals as well as any board goals coming out in the future as you develop that strategic plan. They, they will be in alignment to that as well.
Dr. Betts, this is what they discussed at triple I, correct?
Yes, correct.
Thanks. Broke up, please. Thanks. Roll call please.
Board President, Mr. Hannah.
Yay.
Board Secretary, Ms. Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan.
Yay.
Board Member, Mrs. Williams-Wolfer.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Morris Jr. Absent.
Thank you, motion carries. All right. Mr. Taylor, the time you've been waiting on. Mr. Buchanan.
Board Member Buchanan, I make a motion to appoint Stephen Taylor to the vacant position of Board of Education effective February twelfth, twenty twenty five.
I second Hannah.
So before that, we have need a roll call. Yeah, we're gonna do a roll call. So um Board President, Mr. Hannah.
Yay.
Board Secretary, Ms. Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Buchanan.
Yay.
Board Member, Mrs. Williams-Wolfer.
Yay.
Board Member, Mr. Morris Jr. Absent.
Motion carries.
At this point, we're gonna go ahead and partake in the board oath reading by our Board President, Mr. Hannah.
Mr. Taylor.
Sir.
Here we go. Repeat after me, okay?
All right.
I, Stephen Taylor.
I, Stephen Taylor.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
Of member of Board of Education.
Of member of the Board of Education.
A Lindop District ninety two in accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
Of the Board of Education of Lindop School District ninety two in accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitutions of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
And the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
I further swear or affirm that.
I further swear or affirm that.
I shall respect taxpayer interest.
I shall respect taxpayer interest.
By serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
By serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members.
And others who seek a hearing before the board.
And others who seek a hearing before the board.
While respecting the privacy of students and employees.
While respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority. I shall recognize.
I shall rec- sorry about that. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
Correct. I shall abide by majority decisions of the board.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the board.
While retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
While retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role.
As part of Board of of the Board of Education, I shall I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the
In the equitable and the equitable and quality education for every student in the school district.
In the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district.
I shall foster with the board extensive participation for the community.
I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community.
Formulate goals, define formulate goals, define outcomes and set the course for Lindop School District ninety two.
Formulate goals, define outcomes and set the course for Lindop School District ninety two.
I shall assess and establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework.
I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework.
I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment for student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law.
I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with the state law.
I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community school to advance the vision of Lindop District ninety two.
I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students in our community school to advance the vision for Lindop School District ninety ninety two.
And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering experience for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship and personal development.
And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship and personal development.
Welcome aboard.
You've been saying you are now officially a board member of Lindop District ninety two and we welcome you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Oh, Betts.
All right. Few things in my board president report and we'll be out the way. First thing, on Saturday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty five, the Board of Education was able to go over the operation uplift at thirty six annual gala to support one of our own. Uh, Mr. Greg Buchanan was issued the Hometown Heroes Award. So if you can help me give him a round of applause.
Absolutely.
It was nice to see Greg in a suit. He was smiling. The night was about you, big dog. So I'm happy we was able to be there to make that happen for you. No problem at all. One more thing on my report, um Tuesday, May twentieth, this is a regular board meeting day. Uh, we will be taking board pictures on that day, May twentieth from four fifteen to five twenty five. I'll probably be saying this in my report every month until then. So you guys remember. Uh, we're gonna hopefully let's take some new pictures. Let's not send any old pictures in. Let's take some new ones. Hey, but I you see I got a head off. This is them. So don't worry. Don't worry. So that that concludes my report. Um, thank you guys so much for being here. And like I said last year, Dr. Betts, Ms. Whitfield, Ms. Kathy, thank you guys from a district level. But building level, Ms. Oh, Dr. Robertson, teachers, thank you guys so much. Ms. Zynga, I did not forget you. Do you wanna come up, Ms. Zynga, and talk during my reporter? Did you want me to say it? I didn't forget Ms. Pachac. She's part of the building. Oh, you, that's right. Excuse me. It's district level. Ms. Pachac, I'm sorry. Charged it to my head, not my heart. Ms. Zynga?
So on behalf of Lindop Teachers Association, we would like to help contribute some funds to the seventh and eighth grade trips. We will be doing another um popcorn fundraiser um in a few weeks. And um we will um we will advertise it as um if those individuals um take part that the money that they raise, the fifty percent goes back to that family. And then we can also contribute as well. Um, if there is a family that is struggling to pay for the costs.
Ms. Zynga and L T A, thank you guys so much.
So much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Zynga put me down for some popcorn, okay? I'll support it. All right, that concludes my my report. Um, Dr. Betts, it's on you.
So this is the February Superintendent Report and just as a reminder, if we could reflect on the slide in front of us that every kingdom divided against itself is brought to desolation and every city or house divided against itself shall not stand. And so we need to unite and hopefully some of these celebrations can help us begin to do that. Next slide please. Thank you. Our first um item is that uh is board goal one, student achievement. The fifth graders interviewed board members for a Black Excellence Bulletin Board. And so I tried to um get them to take pictures of each of you, but I know they didn't quite capture everyone, but it was really a fun project and the students were so grateful to you for taking the time to come in and do that. Thank you. Also, board goal one for student achievement, we have a Lindop twenty twenty five spelling bee winner and we want to congratulate her. Mia M. The next thing is board goal two, facilities. We have an upcoming Innovation Center Library renovation about to take place. We do have renderings. We are having some final meetings with the architects so that we can get you some final information. So in the upcoming two weeks, we'll be discussing color scheme, furniture and finishings. And then we'll be able to come to you with a final plan.
So when is it going out for bid? Do we know yet?
It will it hmm within the next few weeks. We'll be able to do that. I I'll get that information from them in an exact timeline. Board goal three, programs and services. We updated our walkie-talkies and just so you know, these work all the way over to Dunkin' Donuts. Mr. Ellis Q tested them himself. Um, so we were able to pass them out to staff. We did a training. Um, the technology department was key in making sure that everybody knows which channel to be on for what. Um, and also with this, we have our own um FAA. What what is it, Mr. Ellis Q? We have our own frequency. FAA frequency? FCC? Right, I'm thinking about the airplanes. FCC frequency. And so therefore we will not have interference from any passing traffic um or other organizations. All right, board goal three, programs and services. Our bilingual parent advisory committee met um and they enjoyed some time decorating cookies and discussing some of the items that they had to discuss regarding student learning pathways and all of the supports that they're providing their children um through those programs. Also, board goal three, programs and services. We had a Donuts with Dad morning sponsored by the Parent Teacher Association. We're so grateful to them for providing that to us. It was a packed house. Also, uh, board goal three, programs and services, pre-K family fun. They had a family day last week, I believe it was. And we had lots of families come out with their children to engage in some crafts and other playful items. And so it was a really good turnout and we're so grateful to Ms. Zynga and the pre-K team for hosting that.
Thank you.
Board goal five, community district relations. The board attended the NSBA Advocacy Conference in Washington DC a couple of weeks ago and we were able to get a meeting with Representative Danny Davis, who um was able to hear our concerns about some of the latest, greatest innovations in the government. And um so he he was very willing to open the lines of communication and we now know that we have a partner and somewhere to go. So we're gonna be advocating with all of our representatives um statewide and nationally in upcoming weeks because there are some things coming down the pipeline. Board goal five, community district relations. We have a board member about to be honored at an upcoming West forty board um West forty ISB meeting. And this is for your efforts toward continuous learning and professional development through I A S B. And so Ms. Williams-Wolford is a twenty twenty four Board Leader Recognition Program Award winner. She is at the distinguished annual merit level. So congratulations, Ms. Williams. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Congratulations. Committee reports, Personnel Committee meeting, uh, Ms. Griffin and myself, that next meeting date is to be determined. Finance Committee meeting, Ms. Griffin, myself, that next meeting date is to be determined. Pays Governing Board, Mr. Dawson, Mr. Morris, Wednesday, January twenty second, twenty twenty five at six PM. That next meeting date is Wednesday, February nineteenth, twenty twenty five at six. Anything we need to know?
No. Oh, yes. Um, it's the, sorry, uh, HVAC over at ACE is at end of life. And so instead of the traditional heating system, they are looking into going into a geothermal. Now that's obviously, you know, kind of moving forward, you know, um, you're talking about less fossil fuels and all of that. That's great, but it is gonna be significant cost. That's what we're talking about tomorrow. I wanna re-bringing that back to the board, but we've been talking about it for about two months on and off. We talked to a contractor. Nothing's going out to bid, you know, but I'm just watching expenses for Lindop to make sure that it's nothing unreleased. But uh, there's already a a district that's done it in the area ninety three over Hillside and I know that eighty nine did it too. Uh, mixed results, but I'll let the board know more after the meeting on tomorrow night.
Um, later on, can you also tell us, like you just said, mixed results?
Oh, oh. Right, exactly.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. Just reach out to Valentine. He got some help for you.
Oh, okay.
For sure. All right, um, safety, S E L Committee meeting, Mr. Morris, Mr. Buchanan, next meeting date is to be determined. Policy Committee meeting, Dawson, Ms. Williams-Wolford, Wednesday, February twelfth, twenty twenty five, four thirty. Next meeting date is Wednesday, March twelfth, twenty twenty five at four thirty. Anything we need to know? We just voted on it.
We just voted on it. We keep it moved.
Thank you. Uh, Para CIA Committee meeting, Mr. Morris, Mr. Dawson, next meeting date is to be determined. Tech, Mr. Dawson, I mean, Mr. Buchanan, that next meeting date is to be determined. Strategic Planning Committee meeting, that's all of us, that's at hot, activated with need. Community Engagement Committee meeting, that's Ms. Griffin, Mr. Buchanan, next meeting date is to be determined. And Negotiations Committee meeting, Ms. Griffin, myself, that's at hot, activated with need.
I'm sorry, I have a question with tech. Um, I know we typically try to keep our um technology since we wonder one for every grade level and every so many years we try to upgrade. We was like upgrading a grade. Um, how is that cycle going and are we still on plan to keep everything updated so we don't have that big surge, having to do so many grade levels at one time is, you know, really like breaking the bank.
A good evening, Board of Education, Community Member Staff. So our teacher computers are four, gonna be four years old in July. So that's on our plan to replace them every four years. We'll bring pricing to the tech committee once we get all that. And then we still have some Chromebooks left over from E-rate, from free E-rate money we got a couple of years ago. And so we saw that, but then we also need to buy some more, just just because we only have like so many. So it'll be brought to the tech committee. But one thing it's gonna affect is tariffs. That's the hard part is pricing between now and not missing pricing now versus July first is the tariffs because of all the um politics.
You're saying if we're buying now, we'll miss that tariff?
My understanding is the prices are gonna go up due to tariffs. So if I get a pricing now, it's gonna only be good for about a month because everybody's it's 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 a tariff issue. And that's what everybody's telling me. Prices, prices maybe now is different versus July first.
So yeah. That would be helpful to think ahead, you know?
Yeah.
So that we can avoid additional costs, especially if it's budgeted for, I'm not sure if it is or isn't or whatever, or if cash flow could be moved so that we can potentially, I don't know how all that money stuff work.
I'm sure that we can figure that out, but we do budget for replacements. We also have an inventory and you know, that includes not just the the Chromebooks, but also the technology you see mounted on the walls in classrooms. Um, so it's, you know, Mr. Ellis Q does a really good job of keeping track of all of it and making sure that he knows where each item is at all times and he's always telling me when the insurance policies are gonna expire or when the licensing is gonna need to be upgraded or whatever. So he's he's on it and So he's, he's on it and he definitely has a cycle that rolls. So we can look into what that would take to get that before the tariffs go into effect.
Does it, does it answer all your questions, Ms. Williams-Wolford?
Yeah, that do.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis Q. All right, the time we all been waiting on. I move at the board going to close session under five ILCS one twenty dash two, C one, four, eight, nine, and ten, to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, or performance of specific employees of the public body, evidence or testimony presented in open hearing or enclosed hearing, where specifically authorized by law. Security procedures, school building, safety and security, student disciplinary cases, and the placement of individual students in special education programs and other matters relating to individual students at seven twenty-one PM. Can I have a second, please?
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Roll call, please.
Board president, Mr. Hannah. Board secretary, Ms. Griffin.
Yay.
Board member, Mr. Dawson.
Yay.
Board member, Mr. Buchanan. Board member, Mrs. Williams-Wolford. Board member, Mr. Morris Jr., absent.
Thank you. You guys have a wonderful night.
See this sheet, excuse me, and board member, Mr. Steven Taylor. Excuse me.
There we go.
And just for the record, no one is outside? Or upstairs? They go upstairs or not, sometimes they be in the gym. I don't, I don't think so. Yes, board president, Mr. Hannah. Board secretary, Ms. Griffin. Board member, Mr. Taylor. Board member, Mr. Dawson. Board member, Mr. Buchanan. Board member, Ms. Williams-Wolford. Board member, Mr. Morris Jr., absent.
Um, I make a motion to move, well, to move the code misses to MA on the salary schedule as of January thirtieth, twenty twenty-five with an increase of sixteen thousand, thirty-seven dollars and sixty cents.
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
We need to say what her salary is. What her final salary is. It's in your folder on that sheet that she gave us.
I didn't turn it in.
It's, it should be in one of them folders.
Forty-five thousand? Base salary? Forty-five, four, six, nine, point, six, oh.
Cause I believe it's prorated throughout the rest of the year.
Oh, so the full year salary would be fifty-five.
Forty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
Plus the sixteen?
No, no, it's with that.
With an annual salary.
Yes, please reread it. Cause we don't record.
Okay, so I make a motion to move the code misses to MA on the salary schedule as of January thirtieth, twenty twenty-five with the increase of sixteen thousand, thirty-seven dollars and sixty cents for annual salary of forty-five thousand, four sixty-five. Can I have a second, please?
Cheryl Griffin, and tell them that it's prorated.
Oh, it's prorated.
So Ms. Griffin, second. Board president, Mr. Hannah. Board secretary, Ms. Griffin.
Yay.
Board member, Mr. Taylor. Board member, Mr. Dawson. Board member, Mr. Buchanan. Board member, Ms. Williams-Wolford. Board member, Mr. Morris Jr., absent.
I make a motion to enter into contract with Diane Bladder.
Oh, she says she's over.
Okay, I make a motion to enter into contract with Diane Bladder for accounting services effective Thursday, December nineteenth for through January thirty-first.
Wait, whoa.
No, but she's billing us for already. Cause we're gonna do what we're currently billing.
But make sure you say twenty twenty-four.
Okay, from uh, what is it, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five? Right, this is the back pay. Which would be for twenty-nine hours at fifty dollars an hour, which would be for back pay, one thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars.
Some kind of way you gotta say the contract.
For her contract going from December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four through, what is it?
January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
It said June something on here.
January, that would be like last month.
Somewhere on here, I remember seeing that. You can't make it two separate motions. We don't have two separate agenda items on here.
So, cause I think that her contract says December nineteenth and so we know.
Right, that it starts December nineteenth.
Contract says January twenty-first. Twenty twenty-five, so we need to change that on that contract.
How do we, how do we fix it?
Well, we don't necessarily.
No.
We just need to pay her for the work that she's completed.
We can make it retroactive. We can approve this contract with a retroactive payment from December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five for that amount. But then we need to change her date on this contract to December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
So that's just the paperwork.
So we'll say effective that date, but we don't have any dates on contract.
Doctor Bess, did you get the date to change correct? It's gonna be December nineteenth?
So just so I'm clear, cause I need to make sure the meeting minutes reflect what's happening.
Right. So I think we should approve the contract like it's on here, Cheryl, but with retroactive pay December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four to that.
Through January twenty-first, when the contract is.
No, through January thirty-first, because the retroactive pay goes from December ninth. Doctor Bess says her retroactive pay goes December nineteen, twenty twenty-four through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
When are you entering into a contract, December nineteen, twenty twenty-four?
So it's kind of like it's overlapping.
Right.
Yeah.
But we're back paying her for what she's done.
Okay, so it 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 seems like back pay is from.
So it's not even considered back pay. You're just honoring her contract. But if the contract states it starts December nineteenth, it's not considered back pay. You're just paying her for December nineteenth.
It is back pay because she doesn't have a contract.
Right, until we sign off.
She's not entering into a contract with the district till today.
So why would you change this contract date to December nineteenth?
Because we want to hold her liable for what's written in this contract effective December nineteenth. Okay, so the motion is going to be. Let's make sure we got this correct. Whatever you say, I'll listen to the tape and I'll write the motion. So however you all want to rework the motion, that's what I'm gonna write it as.
Okay, so I'm gonna make the motion that she would be scheduled from.
So recommended approval to enter into a contract with Diane Bladder for accounting service effective December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four through January?
No, it's June. Oh, here it is. In in two point one, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so let's take this off. June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. What you said, not to exceed?
And that's the end of school, right?
So Ms. Griffin, you're gonna read this the same way and then make sure you put on there not to exceed past June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
And then add your retroactive length statement.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I make a motion to enter into contract with Diane Blattery for accounting services effective Thursday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five with retroactive pay of twenty-nine hours at fifty dollars per hour, which would equal one thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars for back pay. Can I get a second?
And not to exceed, Ms. Whitfield, and not to exceed past June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five's date.
I have through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
But it's not to exceed that. Okay, I'll go ahead. Who's second? Roll call, board president, Mr. Hannah. Board secretary, Ms. Griffin. Board member, Mr. Dawson. Board member, Mr. Taylor. Board member, Mr. Buchanan. Board member, Ms. Williams-Wolford. Board member, Mr. Morris Jr., absent.
I make a motion to accept the resignation submitted by lunchroom monitor sharing web effective February, excuse me, Friday, February the seventh, twenty twenty-five. Can I get a second?
Board president, Mr. Hannah. Board secretary, Ms. Griffin. Board member, Mr. Taylor. Board member, Mr. Dawson. Board member, Mr. Buchanan. Board member, Mrs. Williams-Wolford. Board member, Mr. Morris Jr., absent.
Motion carries.
Board member, Brian Dawson, I make a motion to accept the resignation submitted by middle school math teacher, Thomas J. Phillips Senior, effective Thursday, May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Board president, Mr. Hannah. Board secretary, Ms. Griffin. Board member, Mr. Taylor. Board member, Mr. Dawson. Board member, Mr. Buchanan. Board member, Mrs. Williams-Wolford. Board member, Mr. Morris Jr., absent.
I'm sorry, discussion on this. Doctor Bess, he'll keep us insurance until that date, like it'll overlap until August prior to contract, right? Cause if you give a resignation by.
There's some, there is a stipulation in the contract. If you resign effective a certain date, then it, it continues. But if you, if you don't, I would have to look at the LTA contract. It's worded in there, so.
He's done it in time enough. I just wanna bring that to you with your attention.
I make a motion that we adjourn at eight thirty, eight twelve PM. All in favor, say.
Sounds good.
I'm leaving my fan.
You can take it.
No, I don't.
Tamara, put me down in a second.
I did already. You're welcome.